Welcome to the Atchison County Commission meeting for Tuesday, March seventh. I would like to call the meeting to order and would you join me in the pledge of leave?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment. Not see any public comment. Additions to the agenda. We have several additions to the agenda today. I have a board opening letters that we received for Memorial Hall trustee and Community Corrections Juvenile Board. A proclamation for severe weather awareness. And then several department purchase orders as well. So. Do you want to do those now? Or?
Let's do the proclamation.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so the proclamation. Is for severe weather awareness week. Whereas severe weather awareness week is an annual opportunity to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for and understanding severe weather and flooding in Kansas and to encourage all citizens to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities. Better for the upcoming storm and flood season and whereas the hazard, the Kansas Hazard Mediation Plan identifies several weather and flooding. As some of the costliest type of natural, natural disasters in Kansas. In terms of lost lives, injuries, and property damage. And whereas severe thunderstorms, tornadoes, and floods annually threaten people, pets, livestock, homes, and other property in every county in Kansas. And whereas severe thunderstorms, tornadoes, and floods can happen anytime, anywhere, and without prior warning. And whereas flood damage is not normally covered under a standard homeowner's insurance policy. And whereas the state of Kansas in conjunction with the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration's National Weather Service will observe severe weather awareness week on March sixth to tenth, twenty twenty-three. Now therefore, the Commission of Atchison County, Kansas do here, hereby proclaim and recognize March sixth to tenth, twenty twenty-three, a severe weather awareness week in Atchison County, Kansas, and urge all citizens to recognize this observance with appropriate readiness and preparedness actions. And further call upon and urge all citizens to consider becoming more educated about severe weather threats. Emergency management will be posting educational information on both Atchison County website and emergency management Facebook page during this severe weather awareness week. Do I have a motion to approve?
I so moved.
Okay, I will second it. Then moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass this to zero. And I don't know if anyone heard in the background, but they were testing the sirens. So what perfect timing was that? Did you want to add anything else? Our emergency management directors here?
That's all that.
Okay.
We mostly stuff on the website and our social media all week. Just to help people get informed and educated.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're just gonna add the additions now and then.
You're right.
Yeah, I'm just gonna go through the, so we have one letter of interest for Memorial Hall trustee from Ricky Ross. Do I have a motion to appoint Mr. Ross to Memorial Hall trustee?
Also move.
Okay.
Is he, is he a veteran? Because I think we're required to have two that are.
The letter states he's a vet. Yep.
Who served during time of war.
It doesn't say that. It just says as a veteran myself, I would like to see the memorial building being preserved and utilized to its full potential. So.
Let me pull that stat if you don't go really quickly.
Okay.
And since seventy-three dash four to seven. At least two of the trustees shall have seen service in the Army, Navy, or Marine Corps of the United States in time of war. So that's a requirement by statute. And I know that the one does not. So we, I think we need to verify that.
Okay, do you want to table until next week and we'll verify?
Yes, did he have a, he sent that electronically?
I'll send my motion.
Okay. So we will just table this for next week. It's not electronically. It's been bent like it was in an envelope, so and no contact info, but I'm sure we could find, find him. So I'll leave him in the folder.
That's gonna be harder and harder to find. Candidates that will qualify for that, so. We may have to revisit that statute.
Okay, for the juvenile corrections advisory board, I have a letter of interest from Shelley Nelson. I would look for a motion to appoint Shelley Nelson to our Community Corrections Juvenile Advisory Board.
Some of.
Okay. Then moved, now second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Pass this to zero. Congratulations, Shelley, and welcome to the advisory board. Okay, I'm just gonna go through these additional purchase orders too, so that I don't miss one later. Atchison Senior Village recommends a water softener purchased through CVB Incorporated, the Water Doctor, an amount of three thousand four twenty-two twenty. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some of.
Okay. It's been moved and I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes two to zero. All right, throws me out of rhythm with two of us here. Okay. Okay, this is for the twenty twenty-three Kansas County Commissioners Association membership dues. We fall under the ten thousand to twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine population category. So our dues annually are five hundred and thirty-four dollars. Look for a motion to approve.
This is KAC.
KCCA, the Kansas County Commissioners Association.
Also move.
Okay, and I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes to zero. Okay, county attorney. Has a one fifty-four expense for office shares in the amount of five hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. Motion broker.
Some of.
Okay, now second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes to zero. Okay, the appraiser. For is suggesting purchase order for our Brooks plastering out of the one fifty-four capital outlay account for twenty-four hundred dollars. Motion to approve.
Also move.
Okay, and I'll second. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Passes two to zero. And one more from the appraiser for Main Street decorating in the amount of a hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents out of the one fifty-four account. Do I have a motion to approve?
Also move.
And I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes to the zero. Well, you're right. Thank you for knocking those out. All right, so have you had a chance to read the minutes from last week?
I'll make a motion to accept as written.
Okay, and I will second that motion. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes two to zero. All right, Commissioner comments and committee reports.
I had a Northeast Kansas multi-county health meeting last night in Portland at the hospice center. Everything's going smoothly. Really nothing new to report. We are getting, I had talked with Christina before through a grant, we're gonna have some new signage for their building for the commercial street entrance. So that'll be much, it's pretty dated looking since we had the stucco put on, was it a year ago or a little better? The signage will help dress up the front and be informative. It'll have a scroll. So if there's messages that we can put on the front, like if we need shop clinic or something like that, there'll be a message board. And I think it'll be a big upgrade.
Awesome. Last week I had a solid waste committee meeting, which was really good. The committee discussed the tipping fees for Atchison County and I'm gonna hold off on, on calling for any vote on the resolution, but we've drafted a resolution based on their meeting. And we can go over that next week when Commissioner Rebus is here. But basically, the recommendation would be to get rid of all of the tipping fees on everything except construction and demolition. And with that being said, if any municipality are municipally sanctioned demolition, so your city teardowns based on authorization or us as a county commission, that those can be waived as tipping fees, but but basic C and D would be assessed and then also consider increasing our tipping or, sorry, increase our tipping fee for construction and demolition from thirty-five dollars to forty-five dollars a ton. So it hasn't been increased in a long time and
Since been implemented.
Yeah, and so the, the board kind of deemed it on Stacy and I to do some research and we looked at surrounding counties and kind of came up with with that. So we can talk about it more next week, but I just wanted to mention that because it was a really good meeting with the committee. Also, from that meeting, we discussed the Atchison County cleanup date. So we're still planning on that Friday, April twenty-first, Saturday, April twenty-second, and Sunday, April twenty-third. We should have a final flyer to advertise. The committee reminded us of the tire collection that's been in the past that was successful. So we have some feelers out to get some information on that. So we're kind of waiting till we have all of our details, but that will be out soon. And then Stacy's going to look into some signage for two hundred and eighty-six road, just to catch attention of securing your loads. We deal with the, with the trash along that road often. And so we're just hoping that if we increase visibility, that's another step to hopefully alleviating the problem. What else did I have? Oh, I had a senior village advisory board meeting last week as well. And then we had our policy commit, committee meeting on Friday, so that's it was busy week, but it was good. So that's all I have. Once you are up for the civic plus renewal discussion and approved.
Good morning.
Hi. Sorry that you're on for ten and I apologize, there was
All good.
Some things that needed to be.
All right, so I sent you the purchase order for our website renewal with Civic Plus. It's a yearly budgeted item that goes into the IT budget and also pays for our SSL certificate. And our future web design fee is also improved incorporated into that dollar amount. We did have a three hundred dollar increase from last year to this year. Which is typical for all the services right now is a slight increase. So a purchase order to Civics Plus in the amount of eight thousand four dollars and twenty-seven cents. Do you have any questions?
I just had a couple of questions. So they didn't do a breakdown on their payment of, of what it is. So you're the website recurring redesign annual fee. So do they, how often do we do a redesign?
So every five years we get a redesign. That's part of our, our annual. That's part of the plan that we're in. So every five years we're gonna redesign it no cost because we pay for it incrementally throughout the five years.
Okay.
And then the SSL fee is actually for our email. But they hosted for us and that's around two hundred and eighty bucks a year.
Okay. And then the redesign accrual is just you know what that breakdown was?
So the annual, so we've never had a breakdown between the annual fee for hosting and the website, because that's the plan we're in. So I don't know why they listed it in line items like they did.
Okay.
Because they've never given us a breakdown separately.
It's just included.
It's just included in there. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So usually about three dollar increase each year is what we see from them. And we've been in business with, we're not in business, but we've used their support for our website since before me and that was two thousand and ten. So it's been a while. They're locally in Manhattan, so there's a lot of our counties use them as their, their website hosting and they tailor their websites towards municipalities. They'll do other websites also, but they, they tailor what they do towards us and all the softwares that we have on the backend are tailored to county or city use.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the purchase order from IT recommending Civic Plus for an annual contract in the amount of eight thousand four dollars and twenty-seven cents?
Some of.
Okay, it's been moved and I will second it. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes to the zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Pat, did you want to talk about the Gilmore and Bell purchase order?
Well, you had approved when we engaged them to do the changes to the amendment to the bond trust indenture. And I've signed an agreement with them. This is just their invoice that they sent for seventy-five hundred dollars, which was the amount of the fee was agreed upon.
All right, I have a purchase order from the county counselor recommending Gilmore and Bell, an amount of seventy-five hundred dollars for this third supplemental bond trust indenture. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Okay, and I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass this to zero. Do you have any other like conversation topics you want to talk about today? I mean, we've pretty much been through, I know we'll have an executive session needed in a bit, but just wanted to circle back with you to see if you have anything.
Probably should have gotten when Wes was here, but last Friday when we were talking about policies and procedures, we were talking about what social media's platforms were allowed for the county. And so, I don't know, councillor wasn't here. So is that, will that follow under a policy or will that be under resolution that we would need to approve specific? I, I think we agreed that we would approve YouTube, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram on on county devices. So I, I just wonder what form that would need to take. Even though we were in policy council and was talking about it, but I didn't know whether that would
Yeah, well, we have a policy on, on social media.
Okay.
And so I think it probably needs to be in there and new social media outlets or apps or whatever come up every week it seems. Some of them catch on, some of them don't. So.
And I think that's the reason that we moved, it would, it'd be hard to ban because every every week there's a different one. But if we approve the ones that we use for county business and then everything else would be not approved, if there's a new one tomorrow, it wouldn't qualify. We would have, you know, it, it kind of makes a move to the ones that are allowed on county devices. Cause I know it's been big news. TikTok has been banned from state and, and federal devices, I believe, computers. So that's an outright ban, but in a, we was talking about policies and I, I didn't know whether that would be better in another spot or whether that would go into our future policies.
Yeah, I, I think probably the policy is the right place for it. It's maybe a little easier to change. I, I had talked, I, I had heard that there was some discussion about the social media policy as well that it could use an update, I think. I didn't hear a lot of specifics that. But. Right. Things that we may be trying to answer the questions you may be trying to answer now are, you know, probably quite a bit different than they were back when we were talking.
I'll just piggyback on another thing that we cleared up and we learned at policy meeting with other elected officials. And I think this is good for the public to know as well, because we do have like our anonymous county commission concern feedback form. And then I also received phone calls from constituents. But when it comes to a concern on an elected official, we have nothing to do with that. You need to take all of those up with the elected officials. As far as like writing the policy, we're writing that for basically our appointed department heads. How we interact with the elected officials is just during the budget discussions and budget authority. But anything beyond that, they're elected. Actually, they're elected by the entire county, not just the third like we are. So I think that's important for people to understand that if there's any issues or any concerns or, you know, positive remarks you want to share with the elected officials, I think you need to do that directly to them. So.
Yeah, and, and I think it's a good thing to point out because a lot of times they don't go to the elected official first. They come to us and it's really not the chain of command because we don't and we don't want to micromanage their departments and they are elected by the whole county to serve that need. So that is definitely the first place to go.
Yeah, the only place to go.
Yeah.
Because yeah. So I had a question about so looking at changing the office hours or sorry, the courthouse hours. And Michelle had sent us an order. Pat, can you explain to me the difference of like the order versus a resolution that the commission?
It, it's just a, I guess in the hierarchy of formality, it's just a lesser.
Okay.
A lesser degree.
Okay. So we learned a few things at our policy meeting that were good because we know that they need to be looked at. We have an order in place from February eleventh of two thousand thirteen, where the Board of County Commissioners shall maintain office hours and be open to the public for the transaction of business Monday through Friday from eight-thirty to five. And we discussed that and we also talked to the courts. And we found that people are doing business inside the courthouse beginning at eight. So as the commission, I feel we need to change to where our doors open from eight to five. And then beyond that, each individual office will
have their opening time.
Yes.
It's
Yeah.
Because the courthouse doors are open. Excuse me. We can't assume that every office is open at the stroke of eight, but if you have business at the courts, they are.
One question on that is she also attached the twenty twenty-two statute that they shall keep the same open during such days and hours shall be fixed by the Board of County Commissioners. So question, I guess to you, Pat, is we've adjusted the hours, which didn't does, sorry, does adjusting the hours take a motion and a vote from us? From, okay, and then
It'd be probably a new order.
A new order. Okay.
Or it could be in the form of a resolution if you wanted it to be.
Okay, whichever you would suggest for us probably.
Well, this I understand because I got a couple of emails about it was maybe a little hard to find. And having it as a resolution would put it in the list.
Perfect.
So.
It, and then also just based on that wording, do we have to choose the hours for the offices or just for the courthouse doors?
Well, the way you said it, do you have to? No.
Okay, because, okay.
And you have the authority to, to do that. And there, as I recall, the, the issue that came up that was being addressed is one of the officers was staying open until I think it was five o'clock, but they wouldn't start any new transactions after four-thirty. So they were and that was the, the issue as to whether that constituted being open. I don't think that's an issue anymore. But I think that's the impetus behind the twenty-twelve order, if you will.
Okay, because I just want to be clear. If we don't have to set hours, I think that having the courthouse doors open eight to five is great because that accommodates everyone how they see fit. But if there doesn't need to be micromanaging per office on their hours, I think they, allowing them to do what works for their offices the best, in my opinion. And that's what Michelle had sent to us.
Oh, yes. See that on the minutes.
So we can just do that. Is next week okay to add that to?
Yeah, so do you want to change? Yes, it's fine. Do you want to change it to a resolution or do you want to?
If it's easier to find, then, and if that's your recommendation, I would say yes. The only thing is on that order and the verbiage in it, I just want to make sure, because the way I read it is the county commission order that all county offices shall maintain office hours and be open to the public for transactions, transactions of business. And that's not necessarily what we want to do. We just want to open the courthouse doors and allow them to keep.
The way I read, read that was that the offices shall post hours, show. And so that way they could have their own hours posted. That would, could be different. Am I getting that wrong?
This is good because perception of.
It, it says, does hereby order that all county offices, offices shall maintain office hours, but it does not delineating out what they should be. But I, the way I read that was that they will have posted hours for their office.
And they.
And, and, and then be true to that and not just open whenever they feel like it. I mean, they've got their posted hours and then they're obligated to follow those hours. Unless it would be something well beyond, you know, the norm.
Also remembering another issue was the, the start time of some offices were opening at eight and some at eight-thirty. We had a strange thing in the budgeting where there were a number of positions that were thirty-seven and a half hours per week instead of forty hours per week. And so that was in trying to keep those thirty-seven and a half hours.
And speaking of that, does that need to be changed by the county commission or can that just be a policy update? Because we had discussed that and we didn't, we didn't realize that was happening. But my opinion would be allowing everyone to have the forty hours.
You know, I think that's probably something you should talk about during the budget process because I don't know how many offices it affects.
Yep.
And how many how many people are on a thirty-seven and a half hour a week and whether they want to keep that or?
So, so during the budget of twenty twenty-four, we would just be able to just change that.
Well, right, because if you're going to change it, if an office is going to have three or four more employees, he'd be paid two and a half hours more per week. You're gonna have to budget for it.
Right.
Yeah, that was discussed about having to have the budget for that. But those offices that have thirty-seven and a half hours, is that, how is that set? Would we have to change? Was that by a resolution or? And, you know, how, how did that get started? I think that it was kind of like, well, that's the way it's always been done, but we weren't exactly sure. What set certain offices at thirty, uh, positions at thirty-seven and a half? And, uh, and then how do we change it to get it correct? Revoke whatever set that in mind when we and.
Yeah, that predates me here, um, you may, they have talked to Pauline about how it happened. My, my sense is that it was sort of incremental and. Uh, maybe, uh. Evolved that way. Um, I don't know if we were paying people or flat, paying everybody a salary before the Fair Labor Standards Act. That this position paid. So much per two weeks or per per month or.
Never thought of that. Okay, yeah, we've already established that we want to look at that during the the budget.
Well, so then. For for next week, you want to have a resolution that sets the, uh, opening of the courthouse from eight AM until five PM. And gives each, uh, elected official authority to set their own specific office hours.
Well, I don't think we need to give elected officials any authority from what I took from our meeting on Friday. Yeah, we.
They they they, you have the authority to direct that if you want to, you may not want to do it. But you, it's very clear that Board of County Commissioners has the authority to set the office hours. You may not want to.
Yeah, I don't think that I want to, just for the fact that, um. Based on the department heads as a whole, they had different ways of wanting them based on what works for their constituents and what. Works for them, so I don't think we can find a consensus that will. Be good for the public for all offices.
Yeah, well, you would.
I mean, the courthouse doors opening, I think, will be huge in alleviating any. Problems that we've had with constituents not being happy and then.
Well, there was instances where the court was open at eight and the doors were shut until eight thirty. So, uh, they were having to let people in and, um. That could also affect trial days and stuff like that, they would have to.
So, what what do you want about, I said elected officials, but probably department heads because it would include the appraiser as well. As office here, so each of the department heads would set their own hours.
And then I think that having that verbiage from the order of. These departments shall maintain their own office hours, subject to approval by the commission. Would be helpful just for acquainted, um, department heads not to, I mean, take any. Brunt of of criticism, it would come to us. And also, do you have, here, I'll send this over because. They also put on the order that it doesn't apply to, um, the shift work offices that way.
In their language about maintaining their own office hours once for those, Mr. Court shared office.
I just got to thinking though, so at the policy meeting, we walked away with the verbiage we're using as department heads. And then we just know that elected officials can or don't have to. About follow our policy, so with this, we're writing it. As far as giving autonomy to department heads to. To open as they please, but I just want to protect our appraiser, she's the only appointed really in the courthouse, well, in HR, I guess, that. Like somewhere, it should probably say the commission approved it. Does that make sense? Just so it protects our. That we're signing off, that we said eight to five is fine or eight to whatever their hours are. Okay, perfect. You get the, um. KCCA State House News emailed to you, like of the, you do?
I do, but I haven't been been bad enough getting everything read.
Trust me, we've gotten a lot lately.
There's a lot of stuff there, so.
Uh, so over the weekend, I had an opportunity to read that and I thought it was very helpful, um, just. Talking about what's happening in the legislature and Senate bills, House bills, all the things, um, of a summary, so we can just keep up on it. Um, so I had asked him, I, Mike, the author of that publication. If it would be okay to share that, um, with my constituents and, uh. His response was, yes, absolutely, and an added option might be to have your commissioners put the link. To the, uh, KAC Weekly Legislative Updates on our website, so, um. I was going to visit with you guys and see how you think about that, but I think. Anything we could put out to help constituents keep up on what's happening, um, that affects them would be helpful.
You know, I really wouldn't mind having a an agenda time set for discussing what's ahead, you know, in the legislature. Cause I know, um, there's. For the Area Agency on Aging, which I'm a part of, one of their big pushes is that for years they've been wanting to. Uh, remove sales tax from items, there are five oh one C three. Well, a lot of the Area Agency on Ages, the larger ones are part of county government, so they already don't pay sales tax. But, or ours is a standalone agency, they they have to pay and this is tax money. Grant money, they're paying sales tax on and, you know, this has everything to do with. You know, meals and, uh, all of their, for their meal sites and all of the, uh, things that the supplies that they give out to, uh, senior citizens and. You know, it, they've been pushing for for years, it's just never taken a halt. This year, they've got it started, it's been in both House and Senate, and I don't have those numbers with me. But I think it'd be a good thing that when we talk with the rest representatives. You know, it's like we all kind of know what the other commissioners feel and I haven't, you know, if there's some bills that. Deal with your departments or your, um. Yeah, boards that you're on, you know, I'd like to be aware of them, so I wouldn't mind if we want to set that up next week or whatever, I don't know what. Fifteen, twenty minutes at least, and just discuss the legislative things that are on the agenda.
And would having, um, our IT put that KAC link on our website? Since we're members, that. Um, okay, sorry, I'm just going to have to roll my emails from last week and what we chatted about. Uh, Pat, I wanted to bring up, um, what we were talking about. Um, with the tax sale properties, um, after talking to Connie a little bit more about them. Um, and then our practices, what do you think about just making it the standard practice that after each leftover sale? We can deed them to the county and then six months from that date, we can publish them. Um, to be able to accept the bids like we did with Sherman Road and Fifth and Parallel Properties.
Yeah, that that's fine, um. The history is that there were very few that didn't sell. Earlier in tax sales and then in increasing numbers, we're going forward. Uh, a lot of times those parcels are, um, kind of harder ones because there's. Frequently not somebody around who owns it or, um, takes care of it and so. Going through that process, we used to just take, vacate the judgment after the sale and put them in the next tax sale. Um, that does cause a little bit extra work and it, uh. The downside to doing that is that you're the landowner and you're probably going to get, most of these are going to be within the city limits and the city matches and then. You you may get letters from the city, hey, clean up your property.
Could they assess mowing when things on?
They could, but those would be wiped out in the next tax sale if you sold them that way, um.
So, the conversation was because we're trying to get them cleaned up, we have them from a couple of sales that are just sitting out there. And Pat had said we can't advertise them because they're not in our name. So, right now, we're not doing anything with them and they're just sitting there and we're waiting, um, on. For months now on an answer from the city land, and it's like. When we have something on our list of to do, we 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 need a process, I feel like internally, so that we know, okay. Tax sale's over, we do this, six months later, we publish and we can have our non-reserve bid and then at that point. It gives everyone a date to shoot for, uh, if you're interested, you put in a bid and if not, you know.
That that's fine, yeah, I. I think we need to also, uh, know that, that, you know. Everything that could happen as a result of it being in our name, you know, we'll we'll be more responsible for those properties until they are ultimately sold.
So, how long do you have to publish, um, what, when did we do Sherman Road and Fifth and Parallel, two weeks?
Well, yes, um. I don't know that you're going to have much interest in these, these were properties that didn't sell at a sale that somebody could bid thirty-five dollars for them. Um, so what a lot of counties have done is put them on, uh, just put the list on their website. After that six months passes and then people may make proposals to you. Um, and that that way that it is open to the public, that anybody can view it. Um, I like that, I, I don't know if you want to go through the exercise of doing a publication because I think a lot of these here. You know, I know one of these, for example, is about a ten-foot wide strip of land. Um, I think it's unlikely that somebody's going to bid on it.
But when you, but when you had said by statute, the county cannot offer the tracks for sale until six months after they have been deeded to the county.
Right.
So, they still have to be to us, right?
They they do, and that gets deeded to us through, uh, in the tax sale and. The last tax sale, the last two, um. The, uh. The one before we, I didn't do it because I just frankly forgot because we had a bunch of fighting after the sale, which had never occurred before. Um, uh, and we were successful on all of those, the tracks were all determined to be handled properly, but. Uh, so those were just omitted and then the last one, we were still trying to figure out what our policy should be. So I think we can go back and for those last two sales, get orders from the court to transfer them and then have the sheriff do. Do sheriff deeds, granting those to the county. We've had a little bit, very, very little bit of discussion about whether the county wanted to have a land bank, uh, which were. Well, the advantage of the land bank is, uh, that you have, the land bank has the authority to. Uh, get rid of special assessments that have been assessed, for example, their mowing fees on a property. And, uh, the only way to get it into somebody else's hands.
Could the county, like, I'll just use these ten-foot strip and I'm not, I don't know where that even is, I'm just using it. Could we? Offer it or bequeath it to, like, there's an adjacent landowner that just like, if you want it, it's yours, we want to erase this line and. And, uh.
But that that particular property has had a a pretty good history, uh. And it's been quite a while, the adjacent landowner does not want, it's got a hedge row on it, they don't like to. Maintain the hedge row and on the other side is actually owned by the land bank. Um, and for the the same reasons about mowing and, um. The adjacent property, half of it is owned by a land bank and half of it is owned by, uh, an individual, so it. It's unique against all properties you do, but, uh. It's a kind of a perfect storm, I think, um. Someday, the adjoining landowner will probably want it. But. Not till that property changes hands, probably.
Could. In theory, the county offer it at no cost to an adjacent landowner just to get rid of it.
We've talked to the landowner about something like that, um, and. We we have precedent, we we we've done that, uh, at least twice. Where the Board of County Commissioners authorized us to pay the back taxes on some properties, they were under a hundred dollars. And most of that is coming back to the the county, just so we could get that done, so we could get a. A sliver, you know, some of them two or three feet maybe, back on the tax rolls.
And those are the properties I'm thinking of, you know, it would be nice just to be able to get rid of that line that. You know, that that person then would take care of it and it wouldn't cost them nothing on the initial cost. And it would clear up some of these corners and.
Policy like this, do we need to do a resolution or?
Well, I think you just told me what you want me to do at the, after the tax sales and we could maybe talk about them on a. Case by case basis, I don't think it comes up often enough that you need to have a hard and fast policy about it. Uh, because it's something that's going to come up for ten properties, maybe at maximum. And maybe less than that, but I I guess maybe we we should talk about. Are are we, are the properties that don't sell, do we want, and they're located within the city limits and the city batches and we want to offer those?
I think we should offer them to the public in the same manner. As we have, and we create a policy, we create a timeline so that we know when our, when our sale's done, we're doing this. And then we deal with them and it's, and it's done and we move, we move on, we don't sit. A couple of years later with still these properties at their mercy of, well, we haven't had a chance to look yet, like, we, we need to offer them to everyone. Um, in the same manner at our timeline is my preference.
And that's fine, I think, yeah.
And prior sales, the city had bid at the tax sale on, for the land bank. For some properties they were interested in, they didn't do that at the last back sale, they may have been because they weren't interested in any of them. Uh, it may not be a big policy share.
But I just think it'd be, it'd be nice, especially as many departments are involved in the. In the tax sale and then also new commissioners coming on that we have, we have a. Method or a policy of, okay, everybody knows what to expect when it's over, this is the. The transfers, the sheriff puts the deeds in our name, then we immediately, six months later. Put them out, publish them however on our website or in the paper, whatever we deem to be appropriate. And then two weeks later, we accept bids and. Cleaning them up and putting them back on the tax roll as quick as possible if. If that's the way they go, if they go to the land bank, then then they will handle it, but everybody. Has the same opportunity.
But I think we're going to have many of these properties that are going to have no interest, what, what's the long-term strategy with? The land bank don't want them, the public don't want them, what?
Well, the default is that they're just going to sit there and not be maintained at all. And with no opportunity for them to change hands, so. Uh, you're not making the situation any worse by having them in your name. So I I don't.
Well, I I hate for them to also be. A nuisance in the county's name, you know, we've got a nuisance policy and we want. You know, and we want to, uh, you know, if if the city has their mowing policy or whatever, you know, not superseding, just like, well. Go ahead and mow it if you want, but, you know, we're not paying to mow it or.
But.
It's going to be wiped out at the next tax sale or.
Well, so let's talk about that, because that's a good point of. Well, so let's talk about that because that's a good point of if if Casey Quinn owns a property and I default on my taxes, you take it to the tax sale, it doesn't sell. It's still in my name. But nothing's happening. I'm not mowing it, I'm not maintaining it. Nobody is doing that on my behalf because it's in my name. It just sits there, right? I mean, so. To me, I would rather. Have accountability for those properties to know, like, we've went through the process and then. We've identified them. It's not just sitting out being.
And la la land.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's just.
No, and I appreciate the conversation because. I want to understand all angles of it also of. But I just think. Process wise, this will allow us to just keep moving, you know, with our checklist of, okay, done, done, you know.
It's fine.
Do we need any type of a motion to do that? To put together a. A process.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I you you could, I suppose, if you wanted to have a written policy about. You could. But I don't think it's required. I just printed one. This is maybe like the worst case scenario of a property that. Was in the last tax sale. I how did that happen? And surprisingly, nobody buy it. That hits. Right outside of Lancaster. And. I think they probably real realigned the the road and. Created that little triangle of it, so. I don't know how that ever gets out of the. Gets back on the tax roll because I I can't see those.
Maybe we commission a piece of art to be displayed.
Awesome.
That's about all the bigger it would be. Be big enough for. I didn't even realize that was a.
Do we, oh, I don't know if I'm interrupting to go back of talking. About tax sales, uh the county treasurer, you know, has worked. Pretty hard at getting those, getting our list pared down and. Uh we we've worked together on it, but anyway, there are about eighty parcels that look like they're. Eligible beyond the next tax sale. And some of those, there are some notes on there, a few we still need to do some research on, there's some that. Once of bankruptcy question mark. Need to make sure that it's not included in the bankruptcy and. But that's, that's what there there are. I am. Ready to send out. This is the list of vendors. Or um for abstracting services, if there's anybody I left off. Mostly that was Googling uh. Title services or title insurance or abstracting in the surrounding counties, so. If they're. We would put it on our website as well, if there are any that. Aren't on that list. Let me know because.
That's awesome, you identified.
Yeah.
Several more than I've ever, this is good.
Yeah. I haven't. Heard many of these.
So I think that's ready. Ready to go out, I think. March twenty eighth would be three weeks. For responses. So if that's uh. Unless unless somebody thinks we need more time than that.
No, I like. Keep it going, yeah, March twenty eighth, so we'll have responses back from them on what they're able to do and then we can slide.
Right, so we're asking them for a dollar amount per title report and the length of time. Um they'll need to complete the work and and what. We had a draft of a proposed contract. Which is extremely similar to the last one that we used. So I think that's ready to go out. Well, I don't know if I'll get that today, but. Gotta make in books and stuff, so.
Cool.
Sounds good.
On the transfers for the historic properties that didn't sell, um you had mentioned. Transfer and have sheriff do the deeds. What's the timeline on on that process if we were to start it? Because we have the list compiled. We just send it, does he start the process?
No, um I have to get from the court.
Okay.
An order.
Okay.
For the sheriff to give a. A deed, I. We'll have a a new judge, I guess it would be Judge Sontag that would be on it. I haven't talked to him about doing that, I. Kind of doubt he's going to require that we have a. A hearing and give notice, but. And we'll talk to him about what formalities he wants before. That.
Awesome. And then next week we have um on the agenda to talk to the department heads about the one fifty four capital outlay account. The rollover from twenty twenty two, uh that way Michelle can close out period thirteen.
Okay, have we um? Finalized our budget calendar and?
We did the budget workshops, which I'm glad you brought that up. Um that's another thing from our solid waste. Uh meeting that came out.
I think we identified things to put on it that I haven't seen, so uh I didn't know where that was at.
I I need to work with Michelle on getting um outline departments each, but we have Thursday, a budget workshop. Um Thursday, April sixth. From nine AM to three PM that we. Um had scheduled.
Yes, nine to nine to one.
Okay, I probably put three because I gotta go get like. I I would be here until three.
Okay, what are what are your hours you have? Listed?
Nine to three, but if you have nine to one, that might be what we.
Oh, I have nine to twelve, but then one to three.
Okay, so I just did nine to three, sorry, on my calendar, but then we had a second one that we scheduled for. Uh April nineteenth and that's the one that Solid Waste will be at. Because she uh had scheduled her solid waste committee to meet again prior to the nineteenth. To. Go over her budget and approve it with a recommendation to us and and um. Any questions?
Nine to one on that one.
Yeah, nine to one on the nineteen. Did you have those things? I don't think I heard one for those budget workshops.
Working out, okay, you wanna email them?
Yeah, I need to. And Michelle actually might have those.
Okay.
But I just wanted to double check that we're over communicating.
Well, because then now we can start creating. Just them out there. For budget workshops.
Okay.
To have it ready, so then when you do have, we can just get it posted. I've been trying to add to the agenda for next week. For you. With discussion, right?
Okay.
I don't know if she's listening, if Jody's available.
Or.
Jody's out today. Thanks, Melissa.
Did she say, oh, Jody's out today?
Yeah, sorry, here's your chat. I'm working on it. I get mine first and then I get your guys'.
No, you're fine.
Yeah, she just said Jody's out today, so I think her.
Okay, perfect. Kind of think, do you have anything else or we can do the executive session?
We just had the long.
Yep.
And on that one, how long and who?
Yeah.
I'd say probably thirty minutes.
Okay.
Thirty minute? And two commissioners and yourself?
Is Michelle here?
She is.
We might want to include Michelle too.
That's probably a good idea.
I might.
Are we ready for that?
Uh she's gonna notify and see if Michelle's ready and then we can. Hop into that.
And that would be personal matters?
Yeah, non-elected person.
Oh, not attorney client. Right, sorry.
I think you should be attorney client. There's part of the investment that would be, that would be that.
Attorney client, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. This was the part I'm not familiar with. I just know what I was discussing last week.
I'm asking, she's available. Oh, okay.
No, you're gonna, we can talk about that when we can.
Is she available? I said whenever she comes over and you guys are gonna go over that. So I'm not sure when she's. Patrick, are you ready?
Let me get to the restroom if that's okay.
Yeah.
So she can.
I'm just waiting on the. Right time to.
I promise I'm not looking, but I was like, there's only two pages, but it says it's still printing.
Things going?
Well, we're in some changes, I mean, you know. Publication, so just. Getting used.
New deadlines.
Yeah. You know, the way we do things, you know, sort of thing, so.
You know?
So.
Keep it open.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you know, don't quite understand things. So, because you kind of have to wait and see, you know. The products I thought would.
Yeah.
Good. Presentation of.
We ready then? Yeah, or are we waiting on Michelle first?
Yeah, I should probably wait for Michelle. And I'll wait for the motion.
Are you going to the? Highway officials meeting, March twenty second?
Yeah, since it was only until noon, uh I can make that. I responded that I'd like to because I remember last year. How beneficial they said it was and I, nobody went, so I want to make sure.
Nine to noon.
Yeah. I do have a question, uh. That purchase order for Gilmore and Bell, that. Is that related to the sports complex or?
Yeah, that's for.
Okay.
Both, yeah, both.
Okay. Just thought I better double check. That hallway looks so different.
I moved at the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session. At eleven oh five PM for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged and attorney. Attorney client relationship as allowed by KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And that the board come out of the executive session at eleven thirty five PM in the commission room. Uh basement of the courthouse and those present will be the two commissioners present. And Pat Henderson, County Counselor and Michelle Phillips, County Clerk.
I'll second. It's been moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, move going.
We didn't have any questions on anything that you have seen before. Nope, okay. Because I had a couple of the cap outlays. Um one of them I did, you'll see it in the AP. I went ahead and ran the AP because I could tell it if needed, um but I didn't want it to be late.
Yeah, so you're fine, I'll make sure they were all in there and we just noticed we'll. Reiterate that clerks that can act co KS so that, yeah.
Yeah. I was curious as far as. When you approve like a certain project, like Debbie's project. Because there's still going to be um some bills incurred with that. Um are you guys going to basically? On the one fifty four. I'm not calling, I'm not talking about anything else, um but like on the one fifty four. Are you guys going to basically approve that by the job up to a certain amount? Or are you wanting to continue doing every appeal?
So my preference would be job. But I think just getting back to being in the know of one fifty four and when you get. I mean, we know it, we're in the know during budget season because we're approving it, right? But then that rollover piece of. And we saw last year when we had a million dollars. You know, that.
Right.
We needed to be in the know of what's happening, you know, if we're not utilizing what we budgeted for. Why and what the intended use is so we can.
Assign it.
Yes, so that's, but absolutely, are you correct? Like if we know an office renovation, right, you know, then. Then let them do it and come to us with a summary of renovation or, you know, something to where.
Well, and we could keep, I mean, because I know Brian keeps like.
Even a monthly.
Right, Brian keeps projects, I mean, and if we know it's gonna be a month project, maybe we could update you two weeks in and then at the end. Um as far as totals go, that way I don't have to because. If I notice something coming through AP and it's going out of the one fifty four, I pull that invoice. Do a PO. Present it to you guys for approval. Then I put it in through AP. That's typically how that runs, so it it takes a week. Out of the timeframe of getting that bill paid and I don't like to do that. That's why I went ahead and did that one because I knew. I wanted to get it paid on time because it's going out of state. So um. But if we can just kind of keep a a running total. Of everything that comes out of that one fifty four and just kind of present that to you even. Every other week or something.
No, that's fine. And again, it's just keeping us. Involved in what's being spent and.
Sure.
And the why, that way, when we have that rollover, we can know. Number one, what we're doing, but also as we go into the next budget season. What we need, you know, where we're at, so it's been helpful and last year was. So, yeah, that's why. I appreciate you continuing that process with us, so.
Right, right. No, I I I think it's important as far as, you know, to. Stay consistent. Right, right. No, I, I, I think it's important as far as, you know, to stay consistent. Or to try to stay as consistent as possible when it comes to doing things. For every department the same way, um, as far as the one fifty-four, if you guys wanted it, then we would, we would continue that, but if we can. Move that to more of a, you know, if you get something from right, if you get something from Brian at the beginning of a, like. I know Connie's going to be doing some things too, um, and have them both come and say, yeah, this is what we're looking at, these are the plans we have, this is what we're thinking of. The total cost being, and then just kind of keeping you up to tabs on that, and if it goes over that. Then potentially have you guys do some more approval on, oh, the costs have gone up a little bit, we're gonna approve it for another ten thousand. Or just bring, bring appeals as we go, however.
And that was the exact conversation with the treasurer last year, she, she forecasted this was happening, so she's like, okay, I'm gonna leave here with this. So that I can apply it to my project when the timeline gets here.
Right.
So, that was helpful. Um, speaking of budget calendar. Um, just recapping our process that we've kind of discussed, that'll be different this year of. Making sure, so we have our two budget workshops scheduled. Do you want to get together or do you want me to obtain? A schedule from department heads and give to you so that we know who won the workshop, because we had solid waste advisory committee and. We realized that Stacy needs to be in the second one, because her advisory board will meet before that. Um, but I can coordinate that with them and then make sure we do our department head meetings before any appropriation meeting, so we can kind of know where we're at.
Right.
Budget wise, before any outside allocations and.
Right.
Have we, uh, finalized or budget calendar like we've had the print off that we've had? I know we've added things this year. I didn't know where that was at.
That I printed it, so. And we were gonna put our heads together on a couple of changes and adding R and R dates, so.
Right.
Um, we can do, maybe get. That'll be.
No, I know.
Yeah.
I know. Where did it go?
Yeah.
Which we have our workshops, um, dated, so that'll be helpful, so maybe, um. In the next week or so, you and I put our heads together and finalize that and bring.
Yes.
Kind of, yes.
Perfect. Yes, I'm gonna take my, um, the laptop with me, I'll leave the surface here when I go. So I'm gonna be planning on doing some things in the evening. Keep myself kind of halfway caught up. Emails alone is tough to kind of keep cut up with, but.
Need like an auto file for mine.
I have an auto file for some of mine, but it's like.
I just.
Um, but I need to look at that. You know, you get something, it's like, oh, but I really needed to look at that first, because the next thing you know, you've got twenty of them in that auto file.
And if there's ever anything that you're like, I don't need to know about this, I just, I like to keep you in the know of.
I can always go back. That's what I keep saying when I'm, when I get a Casey email, it's like. I can always go back, and if it's very, very important, she's gonna call me and say, hey, what'd you think of that?
Yeah, so, well, and how many times it's like, you refer back, like, yeah, just like every other meeting, you know, eh, yes. So, it's important, so.
Um, there anything else you guys? I, I knew, like I say, I knew I put a couple of extra things in the blue folder, the proclamation was one of them, but I thought it was important, you know, we, we try to have. Proclamations as we go. Because there are important things out there that we wanna, you know, let people know that we're thinking of.
Yep.
So, um, and I mentioned that I did two copies that way, there could be one out there at the A M S building and then. Um, one here, so we can share that information.
We heard any feedback on the adjustments on the microphone?
Um, I asked for feedback, I haven't heard anything negative, so hopefully it worked.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just, just occurred to me.
Yeah, no, after last week, I just, hey, if anybody has any feedback, but. Usually our religious watchers like that do it every week, usually are the ones that I hadn't heard, so hopefully it fixed it.
Ready, I'm going back to my office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, yes, I think I do. Pat, you have. Second to pick your brain about some other things.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, as a count, as a county commissioner serving on an advisory board, so I know all three of us serve in capacities to boards. And for that, when we are privy. To info, okay, so let me just utilize Senior Village, okay, I've gotten, because it's county owned. Because it's county ran, um, it's standard practice, it seems that people call me. People email me, people give me feedback, um. Based on their loved ones' experiences or, you know, some tied to the facility. Um, so when I'm obtaining this information, is it? Appropriate and allowed to share with the advisory board, I guess, is my first question. Um, so that they're aware and the advice and the conversation they're having. Um, Monica had told me on her advisory board for community corrections, she shares. Every single thing with that advisory board that's happening at community corrections, so I think the hurdle being. We have had, we haven't had a department head, um, a county department head, a solid. In, in histor, history, you know, that when we change, you know, the county has processes of how to escalate. Anything we hear, you know, you go to the department head or call the department, you know, all of the things, but. It feels like with Senior Village, I meet resistance when I give that advice, that they just wanna share with me and they don't wanna. Follow the channel, um, whatever reason that may be, but I just need an outlet of. Making sure I'm following all proper procedures, um.
Well, I think there, there's kind of two questions there, and one is what you're allowed to do and what should you do are, are really different, and then what should you do is up to you. Uh, in, in a, in a hard center judgment. I think it's allowable.
Okay.
For you to, to share that information and, you know, on the thing that we had the email discussion about, I think it's a good idea, actually.
Okay.
In, in that, in that situation to, to share that.
Okay, um, second. Senior Village, um. For being at the table for now, almost two and a half years. Um, and really wanting success for that place. It's an ever-changing thought process in my head of how to make that, how to achieve that goal, um. And most recently. I had, um, a gal say you need to look into, you know, state funding, or you need to look in, you know. And all the things, and I mean, I've looked at grants and different things, but a lot of times government entities are not. It's not a five oh one C three, so you're ineligible or, or whatever it may be. For long-term success. We have great residents, we have great staff. We're putting together a great leadership team. The financing piece, financial piece is how, is what I need to understand, because when I. Started as a commissioner, it was explained to me by fellow commissioners that. Senior Village is just basically out here operating and running itself. From that, as assigned to it, I quickly learned that that's not necessarily the case. Um, and then see all the other county resources that are utilized to make it great, um. I'm just wondering, so. It's under the county umbrella, but as we approach the R F P for auditors. Other auditors are looking at us saying, well, we never knew you had a long-term care facility and asking me questions and. I guess. And talking to staff and, and just the channels of communication from the public and what it takes to be successful. And everybody to work together well, I don't think our current model is, is how it should be. But I don't know. How to find a better model, if that makes sense, so, um. Can Memorial Hall, I think you had mentioned as an example of like, we own the building and we assign trustees. Is that an option for Senior Village to where you would own it? However, you would assign trustees to basically operate it and then. I guess I have several questions, if that were the case, could you make it a five oh one C three to where you could be eligible for? Grants and different things and then. Sorry, I'm just gonna finish this real quick, so, and then also local foundations, local community groups, it's hard to go to them and say. Hey, we're a government, you know, it, it's a different ask, I guess, because, because we're a government.
Absolutely, yes.
So, I'm just trying to think big picture of how we set these, this up for success. And give them the tools that the county commissioners don't need to be. Part of that equation when we have great staff. And when we get great leadership and advisory board and all the things that we own, we own them, but maybe not run them.
So, yeah, stay, to answer the, the questions that. The reason that the county continues to run this because of the Haraway Trust. I think that, uh, most counties got out of having county homes at one time, the. Responsibility for caring for the aged, uh, was the county's responsibility and that shifted. The state high level to D C F and, uh, K dads. And a lot of counties sold their nursing homes or closed their, their county homes as they were called. Um, but Addison County did not, and I think a large reason for that was because we had the. Haraway Trust, we also had exceptional leadership. Um, and that, that Senior Village. Except, better than, uh. Better than any other I've seen, even if other facilities when we, we worked in them. Uh, so it took very little time from. For, for the commission, uh, because of that R Y trust, though. There's, if the county ceases to own the facility or ceases to operate the facility, there's. An open question as to what happens to that trust. And under state law, because of, uh, it's a charitable trust involving a public entity. The Kansas Attorney General has statutory authority to be involved. Um, in looking at the situation. In this particular case, the trust doesn't say what happens if we stop running a nursing home, but I think that just wasn't something that was considered. When, uh, when Mr. Haraway ruined his will. But so there isn't a, uh, well, if it didn't go to us, it would go to a different beneficiary, he is. The, the state plan essentially, he gave away specific dollar amounts and specific things to. Uh, if beneficiaries, but then everything else goes to the county. And we now have the, the trustee of that is Bank of America and they. They have some arcane trust rules about what constitutes income and. What constitutes principal, then they pay us the income from the trust annually and that those are the only goals towards paying nursing salaries. So if, uh. If you decide not to own the facility or operate the facility or, I'm just going to use those terms kind of interchangeably for. The big level discussion. A decision will have to be made and probably by district court as to what that means for the trust. Uh, and that's going to involve the, and his attorney general's office being involved in that. The formulation of the, what the state's policy, I guess, would be. Uh, I think we could have substantial influence over that by having a really good plan in place. And having put some thought into it, and so if the, the plan was to try to make a five oh one C three corporation. That, uh, that could be owned by the county, um. Not-for-profit corporations are a little bit different, they don't. If they, they don't ordinarily have stockholders, but there's no reason why they can't have stockholders, so. The county could own the stock if that was the, the model that you decided to do. And probably want to get, not probably, you want to get somebody smarter than me about tax law to be involved with that to make sure that we're not. Doing something silly, but in any event, uh, I think you could have a, it could become its own five oh one C three corporation. And the management of that would be however we set it up or you set. So it could be it's on board, it could be the three of you as the separate board for that. I think their creativity is your limit there.
Okay.
Uh, there is, so that's, that's the first one, that's a possibility to do that. Uh, Kansas statute do allow for you to appoint, um, trustees to operate. Hospitals. And I, as I recall, when I looked at that definition, one time. I thought that the definition was broad enough that it would include that you could do that for, uh. Uh, a nursing home, but I don't quote me on that, but, um. But I, I think it is possible for you to do that, or my. When I looked at it a couple of years ago, that's what I remember thinking was the possibility. Uh, the downside to doing that is that you're still financially responsible, that you're having somebody else look at the management, that you're still on the hook for. For paying the bills for it, and that could have it be a significant drain. The, the Haraway Trust itself said that, uh. It wasn't intended to displace the. Obligation that the county had to fund the facility, because of course, that's on the county obligation to fund the facility. To make the facility better specifically through having, uh, more and better nursing staff. And so, to meet that, we had, had a minimum, put in the budget. The amount that's being spent from tax dollars. To keep being paid and. So that was, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars at that time, and that has remained consistent. In addition, we, there are a number of services that are supplied that are not billed to. Senior Village, and of course, there's, there aren't funds there to pay them either, so it'd be the county bill itself. But, uh, H R services, payroll services, accounts payable. Legal to some degree, uh, all of those things were, were billing for. So. Cause I kind of lost track.
No, you're fine, this makes it, this is optimistic to me. Um, I guess I would have a question, if we did the five oh one C three owned by the county. Um, and we're able to separate the rules of just those things you said and. H R, legal, A P A, uh, accounts receivable, all in-house at Senior Village. Could the county staff still? Be, um, able to have county benefits since we're still owning them, even though. Is that, because that's an important piece.
I think so.
Okay.
Some people, employees, there would still be.
Yes, absolutely, they would still be able to get the benefits of working for the county, it would just be a separate entity. And it, it's just a different form, it's just, uh, it's more of creating that long-term plan for success and giving them.
Yeah, I, I, I said, yes, I, I think so.
Okay.
Uh, and.
And I agree with you as far as what, if we have to have a case for district court for the Haraway. Like, i- if this is an all-encompass plan with people that care and want success for this facility from. Our staff inside to the commission, to the advisory board, like, we're just trying to figure out. How to navigate to where everybody. Is relieved of all the things that. We just have too many inner workings and the hierarchy of the county works, but when you apply that to a nursing home, it, it necessarily, uh, have some challenges. That they face, our staff faces, um, that we face, um, and. Everybody's putting in the time and, and that's not a problem, it's just alleviating all the. A problem. It's just alleviating all the channels of. Just streamlining it and I think this discussion and then future discussions from staff and the advisory board will be very helpful. Um to get us on the right. Right path forward, so.
Well, yeah, we would need to formulate what that, what we really want that to look like. If there would be a a change.
And I guess. Sitting next to you, I would love to hear your thoughts on that, because being the senior village commissioner and and being part of. Everything with our staff and you know, we have these discussions, but how would you? Like to have that look like, because it's going to take a lot of planning and discussions. And I would like to see that bundled through the advisory board, because. We have staff represented on the advisory board, like it's just a really good group of people. But I also know that right now the commission rules on Senior Village, so would you be? Um okay with allowing them to explore those options? And go through the process and put in the time to come, would you be willing to 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 take that?
Yeah, I mean, I I think that's. Just kind of changing form a little bit. I don't think, I mean, if it would help, absolutely. I mean, I'm. I have no, I think we've been searching for something that is the right answer and what that is, I mean. I don't know. Things things have changed. You had mentioned earlier, what was that quote you said? The earlier commissioners basically said that it was running itself. And it probably was more at that time. Um when you've got an administrator that can handle and keep all of the as the juggling act and everything. Going and had a fantastic facility, it was. Monitoring itself. It was, uh you know, self uh funding, you know, it all of those things happened and when. One of those falls, all of a sudden you've got. Uh you know, it it all falls apart and it's very hard to put all those pieces back together again and. Uh in the meantime, I think there's been law changes uh. You know, the funding ratios from uh Medicare and Medicaid are different, you know, I think. You know, as as you can tell, when you see. It's not uncommon for another nursing home to close, you know, well, it's it's not just been tough for us. It's been tough for the whole industry. And the effects of COVID has had and the the changes, so I mean, if we have to. Restructure something, everybody can keep it going. I mean, it's definitely worth looking into.
Awesome, yeah. Yeah, I definitely think that. More in-depth discussion with the with the board and. Mister Henderson and looking at what our options are and. How to be successful for more funding opportunities um.
Yeah, that.
Will be a benefit.
That would be definitely a change. It might take some. Analysis to see whether how much it would benefit us. You know, what were would all of those benefits be and what would the detriments be? You know, there's usually when you change something, you're gonna. You're gonna get dinged somewhere else. It's my thoughts.
And as far as the district. The district court ruling on Harway. You couldn't make that pitch prior to making any changes just to. Like, does it have to be finalized and then you go and ask or? Can that be part of our exploratory process of?
To get an opinion.
Yeah, yeah, of.
We could definitely get with the A G's office and get some opinions from them. About whether we're headed in the right direction, because they will. Be involved. Uh district courts notoriously do not give advisory opinions. Uh there's a constitutionally. Cases and controversies clause. So they were nearly done. There's a statute that allows them to, but it's done by. Having a lawsuit filed and formally asking for it and. So there there's not a way to informally just go ask it. Go ask the judge what you think you might you're likely to do. You could do that about things like scheduling and do I need to have a hearing to have a tax sale order? You know, that sort of thing, but not on something on something like this. But we definitely could engage the A G's office, but I. I I don't want to be hypercritical of the A D's office, but this had been suggested once before. And the A G's office was involved be- before I knew that they had been. Uh contacted even and their proposal is something along the lines of. Creating, using that money just to create a fund to give bonuses to. Any nurses that lived in Atchison County that worked at a nursing home, any nursing home. Which I I really didn't think was. In keeping with what the trust itself was to do, it wasn't just let's make nursing. A more. You know. Pay more, I think was to make a facility, a better facility. So I I think if we had a a plan. And it was fleshed out and bought out. Get involved. Setting up the the different entity structure or something that.
Of course, different uh A G to make a huge difference, different administration.
Yeah, and I I I doubt that this was something that. The A G actually.
Has a dog in a fight.
But but you know, the staff certainly did and they, you know, they. But anyway, we. Nothing came with that, because we there wasn't a consensus to go forward with it, so.
That's awesome. Anything else you have that?
I can't think of anything. So.
Do you want to just resume on working on your own things first? I think that was everything. I mean.
Well, I mean, uh do we adjourn?
No, not until one.
Well, I didn't know how that. So we just go into recess and then one will come out and. Are we gonna be on camera the whole time? I mean, I I I don't know how this. Format, what's your expectations of it, so.
Yeah, no, probably just keep it going until one and then we can adjourn.
Okay.
You have that letter from Mister Ross.
Uh yeah, I put it in the blue folder in Michelle.
I can grab it if you'd like me to.
Okay, okay. I'm gonna look through my pile. I might have something else. Here's some of these might be here. Oh, yeah, see, look, there's more things to sign in this. I missed it. Do you keep that updated on list with the phone down here?
I used to put it right back here, because there's no place here. It's gonna get picked up and. Lots of them just something you've got here. And I actually, I usually would put like if we get a copy, hard copy of the budget calendar, that's kind of. That's where I put stuff like that up there. So if you're ever in looking for something, that's where I put it.
Okay.
I had a constituent ask me about ever G rates in the Skoda. Are you familiar with that?
So very little. I know that the. The city of Muskoda is different as they have. What do you call that? They make money. They they're like a part of this distribution of electricity and the. Like Effingham has water. Their their water system is is Effingham. Uh and so when they are selling the water uh and putting the meters out. That's how they're the city is making money in addition to property taxes.
Okay.
Muskoda has an interest, I know, in the in the electrical, so I think basically they are buying power, then it's distributed. And so I and I don't know how much, I don't know anything much more than what I'm saying, because I don't know what the rates would be.
No, you're fine.
But um.
That makes sense, because she sent me like there was a with the electric bill, there was a little uh insert. That basically gave um reasoning why. Electric bills are going up, you know, a justification for a rate increase. Um but it was in the bill and I was like, I wasn't familiar with that, because. Our ever G is just straight with ever G. Um and I looked at my bill and I didn't have any clause or.
Well, I think that's similar. I think that's they call the franchise fee like in City of Atchison has that.
Okay.
So uh and. I'm not for sure. Seems like Lancaster did have or something similar to that. I know Effingham is not. And I don't know anything about here, but I think that's a franchise fee.
Okay, that's interesting. So, yeah, I hadn't heard heard of that. Um but there was like justification about substations and stuff, so for an explanation, be better just to contact that city clerk.
Mm hmm, yeah, it's. So that's my district, so they but they contacted you.
Just with a copy, with a picture of the copy and.
I don't know.
I but that's good. You taught me something about the county that I wrote. I didn't realize that that was happening in in Muskoda.
Yeah. And I know that. Water rates went up in Effingham, which is the topic and with the. Valuations being out and that's that's a big topic on. Uh social media or analysis, the 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 valuations.
Well, and. I I have a good handle. Because the I've had enough conversations with our appraiser. Uh how to explain the process and and what she's bound to, but I had a constituent. Put a post on, but then it went away. And so I asked this person if they would call me, because there's. There's a lot of questions out there and a lot of them I don't have the answers to, but I wish I did, because of the more I can understand the process and and what we. Can do, if anything, you know, at our level, and if it's nothing at our level, what we can. Communicate to our legislatures at the state like. Because I hear them and I understand increases are frustrating. And I watch the real estate market. I mean, it's the past couple of years have been ridiculous. I mean. And it it catches up with the everyday person on the back end. It's not the fact that they. Made an improvement to their house necessarily or not. Because those are the ones that are like, I didn't do anything to my house. Why am I getting, you know, because I think that's the. The misconception is in to generate what your value is, the appraiser just drives around and and picks individuals. Of why.
Yeah.
And so understanding.
All updated with uh.
Based on.
Yeah.
Yeah, based on the market analysis study.
Yes, and and everything that you've heard in the last couple of years, it's like, and and I've heard people. Say, the county's gonna have to, the government's gonna have to do something, because we can't buy a house. If it's if it's on the market more than one or two days and they're paying twenty thirty thousand over list price. And they're also doing things like waiving the inspection fees and and I mean, all of them to get the perks to get them in the door. To a house that, you know, was forty thousand less the year before, you know, and so. These market forces are what that's what's driving the evaluations. Uh and and I think it's when the in the housing side, it's worse because. I know a few years ago, the uh uh ag land was going up. Very very steep. And of course, all the people in the rule were talking about the ag land. Well, the uh housing was flat. So and ag land was going up. It affected far fewer people, because. You know, there's only so many of people are invested in ag land, but now even everybody that's got ag land has a house. So I mean, expecting everyone uh in the in the county more, because every. Everybody's living in a house, most most people are.
Yeah.
And but now it's. Ag land is probably peaked, but with the prices now, I mean, we're gonna be getting. Since it's valued differently and that's on use value. It has a greater lag time of when. Market forces come into play and that's an eight-year average. So what's happening right now with the the prices is gonna peak and this is gonna be a. A year when it gets into the system is gonna affect ag land again, so. I don't know, it's. It's very hard to explain.
It is. Well, but also. It's. I can explain it, but it's just like. I feel like our constituents lean on us to fix it and I don't know. I have not learned anything in our authority or our level that we can do to change it.
Yeah, the only thing is cut taxes, I mean, and cut actual dollars and so or or at least. Be able to explain our choices when we continue funding or increase or decrease. We've got to be able to explain why these services are important and why we need them. And again, it's. When you get the difference between this, the way things are funded, ag land and that uh then this commercial property and and the houses. They ultimately make your value of tax dollars in the county, which the uh mill levy then. You come up with how much your mill is worth. Well. That mill levy like this last year, we we didn't spend any more. Ad valorem taxes than we did the year before. The mill levy dropped, so. People think, well, I'm gonna be paying twenty percent more because my house went up twenty percent. Well, that's not necessarily true, because. It it will probably be a. The housing will be paying a greater portion. Of the valuation of the county, if I'm saying that right. Because it went up, but ag land didn't as much. So I mean, there's the proportions, even if we're paying. Uh raising same amount ad lorm for that we did a year before. The value or the the taxes you pay will be the difference between. If. I and I don't know the um. How much percentage like housing is of the full tax valuation of the county. So if if it goes up twenty percent, that is it thirty percent, forty percent of, it's probably more than that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Are you following what I'm saying? I mean, it between the the ag, the commercial and the real estate or the housing, yeah. That all fluctuates. I mean, from year to year. It's like if houses are twelve percent more than a year ago. That they've increased their portion of the total tax dollars for that year, but what really drives makes. Taxes go up is raising taxes, the actual dollars spent. So that's the portion of the uh formula that we can control or.
Well, and also just explaining to people all the different taxing districts. That they live under, because I think sometimes it's easy to just think county taxes. And and think of the courthouse versus all the entities that have boards that you can be speaking to about making sure. So.
What's interesting is going into uh. And it's your tax code, which basically says that you are in. You're you're paying the county plus what township you're in, fire district. Water district, I don't know about water district, the cemetery districts, library districts. And all of these different, and so whatever combination of those puts you in that number, which then that's what. Hits the mill levy. Against your property, so it's very, I don't know how the clerk's office keeps it straight myself. It's tough. School districts is a big one. Also.
Monica responded on the community service. She's interested, so I'm gonna connect her with the our needs and they can. Work that out. That wouldn't really be Stacy's needs, that'd be more Joe's. Or ours.
Well, it's just more Stacey's, I may add. I think they're the ones that oversaw them, the uh. Workers in the past.
I'm just gonna include them both in my response pack, so we're all on the same page.
Who was the gentleman that walked in and then wasn't here long? Do, did you know him?
I didn't see.
Oh, already on the way for, or meeting first started.
I was thinking that with Mark, you're hearing, I thought. Oh, you're right, I did see him. Yeah, he's, he's in my district. I'll call in and find out what.
Okay.
Was that, I was reading the proclamation, I think, I was trying to. Pretty sure that's who that was. Yeah, it was.
Okay.
You're right. Sorry, I forgot, I did see him when I'm greeting, but I. Yeah, he was gone even by public comment.
Mm-hmm, yeah. He wasn't here at all. We've got some time to kill, I'm gonna. Run, get some refreshment, is that right?
Yeah, I'm just gonna email these people back. Sorry. Nothing, I'm sorry. Nothing, I think, I think Patrick heard me. Didn't mean to, I really didn't.
If I plan to send all of my residents on my nuisance list a letter giving them info on our countywide cleanup day and tipping fees and that, do I need to bring justification to my fellow commissioners? Because, okay, so each individual, one of us acting in our own district can deem a property to be waived.
Oh, oh, if you're talking about like if they tear, I understand you want to waive the C and D.
Yeah.
I think the board has to.
Okay, because I know.
I thought you just asked who can you send the letter?
Well, I just, I want to give them helpful information of like this is a benefit to you to clean this up while, I mean, there's no, no tipping fees based on you've been on the nuisance list for how many years, you know, this is a, we're trying to help you. So I was just wondering what I need to bring to them? Do I need to bring?
Is there a plan to tear one down or something?
Well, so two.
Is it they're just taking stuff out there, praying that we won't, we don't have tipping fees?
Right, but I was trying to help them make a plan because one, two, three, three for sure and four, the fourth one was making arrangements to have it torn down and tore it down, but just hasn't hold it off because of the cost. So it's just a pile of debris that needs to be.
Yeah, I think if, are you doing it in the form of a letter?
Yeah.
Then I think I would tell them that that it's premature by a week because you haven't adopted the resolution.
Well, yeah.
But that the commission has the authority to waive that.
Okay.
If you have a plan, please let us know so that we can consider waiving the fee.
Okay, so if I have my letter drafted and I could attach this list for them if they need it, but then that way, because next week, if, if they decide to go along with the solid waste committee's recommendation, I would like to have this letter ready too, since I'm down to almost a month before county cleanup day. Because I, I just wanted to get it to them so they're aware, like, hey, as of April one, hopefully this is what you can look at and start making arrangements for for cleanup now and trying to make it a positive.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Another question, Potter, I talked to Joe about road right of ways, but if we're going to place a dumpster in Potter, do you think, because there's no one really there to give me permission, do you think I should talk to like a?
Where are we going to put it?
Well, so I had thought straight south across from the store, there's like a, a parking area right on our right away that it would be good, but I wouldn't want anything to get in the folks to the South yard, so I need to talk to them just to give them a heads up. Either that or to the west of the store in the parking lot area, but again, it's since it's there's no one really there to give me permission outside of the landowner other than it's in our right away. And just putting it in the right away posed any risk, like I want to make sure whatever we do and give instruction is right. So it might be better to put it to the west of the store and get the store's permission.
So yeah, I, I've got the map up now, so I have two ten, essentially two ten and mountains. At the intersection there, it looks like it's a much wider ride of that. So I shouldn't put it here.
Yeah, yeah, because literally people like park there. Sometimes that, I mean, it would fit there fine. I just didn't know from a exactly best plan or is it better since there's no like, I guess I just would hate someone to not be able to see around a stop sign, you know, have something happen and then like, well, the county is crazy. They put put this in their own, you know, in a place.
There's no one to really, there's, there's no one to really ask.
Right.
Like there's not a city commission or something that has.
So would we, yeah, I don't know.
That's the school thing, right? Because it I've been out there in a while, but yeah, I don't know. I mean, you could ask the law enforcement, I guess, if you
Okay.
and road and bridge, they have
Yeah.
comments or something about it, but
Well, and Joe said, you know, he didn't think here would be an issue as long as this, these folks were fine with it, but then also this is parking and he said it was way back and nothing's really documented who asked all to that. But he thought the county could have that we could just put it along there, which I was going to go talk to these folks, but I just want to make sure that I'm conveying what I need to be conveying.
It sure looks like there'd be maybe the place.
Okay, so you think either place would be fine?
Yeah. Yeah. I've asked Roger about how accurate are the lines used and the lines are completely accurate, but pictures sometimes aren't. But this one is, is centered more or less in there and this one is not. So.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, absolutely zero help. That was my goal.
No, you're, you're fine. I just, these are just a few things I want to get checked off my list to make sure that there's enough time that people know.
What is that?
The placement of the dumpster. The best. This is awesome though, the school, I just thought of one of the F and M president of K club is wanting to participate in the cleanup day. So that's awesome. Guess I could go ahead and send this out that way everybody. That way everybody. That way everybody. That way everybody.
Yeah.
This is just kind of a quick. Off the top, like, rough draft or what? I was thinking. We'll want a clock. No other. What comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Been moved, I'll second all those in favor say I, or I, passes two to zero, one o'clock, and we are adjourned.